All right, so I'll just kick it off. Betsy Lake, Assistant City Administrator. So in addition to the overview of how the departments are organized and the type of work they're doing, we thought it would be useful to understand the land use and project development, economic interplay, and how these two departments and the council work to bring a variety of projects to fruition. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Alexa and Bill to walk through the presentation. I'm also going to apologize in advance, I have to jump off at 3:30 for a negotiation. But Latanda Simmons has graciously agreed to step back in and cover me at that time. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to Alexa.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay, as Betsy said, we're going to be talking a little bit about the intersection between economic development and land use, really focused on some major projects and some exciting economic development initiatives happening in certain development or planning area, like area plan neighborhoods and communities. Next slide. Just orienting everyone around our citywide goals. So this work really falls pretty squarely in the housing, economic, and cultural security goal, and then also, you know, touching a little bit on vibrant and sustainable infrastructure. So when we talk about how we're prioritizing our resources and our workload in our departments, we really, we always have to tie it up to which citywide goals we're advancing. And I think when we talk about land use and economic development, those are the two goals we're focused on. Next slide. So I don't want to be too repetitive, but we'll go through these. Just going, driving a little deeper on how Economic and Workforce Development staff gets involved in land use and major projects. You know, in addition to sort of the very obvious ways, like our public-private development team and our real estate team, it really does touch upon it in pretty much every aspect of economic and workforce development's work. So the business development team actually works with new businesses when they're coming to Oakland or with existing businesses that want to expand. We help them with site location. You know, we work with commercial real estate brokers to help them find a new location if they're trying to move to Oakland or to find a bigger location that serves their businesses' needs if they're trying to expand or relocate. We also help them with permit navigation. That's a really key aspect of starting a new business in any city is really how do you navigate the whole landscape of the different types of permits that are needed to get a storefront and open it, get it open so you can start generating revenue and creating jobs. On the workforce development side, when we talk about large-scale real estate development projects, it's not unusual for there to be a community benefit agreement attached to that development project, and it's not unusual for that community benefit agreement to include a workforce component in which a developer may be obligated to make certain financial or other types of contributions to support workforce development needs or labor needs in the community where the project's being built. Cultural Affairs, as I mentioned, has a role in public art, so determining what type of public art goes into these new development projects. And then, as we talked about, public-private development and real estate, in many cases, especially if it is on city-owned land, will do the actual negotiating, drafting of agreements, and managing and overseeing the deal through the development lifecycle. Next slide.
So, and again, to quote my friend, at the risk of being a little repetitive here, a lot of this we did cover. But specifically aligning with these project opportunities, we want to make sure that the project that's proposed is compliant with the general plan. And then the zoning, which is the instrument that says something can be whatever it is we're proposing in terms of its commercial or institutional or industrial character or residential character, and that it is aligned with our specific area plans or neighborhood plans, depending on which one has jurisdiction at that particular site. And then with the project, as it comes in, that whatever's being submitted complies with what has been agreed to either through the entitlement process or through the entitlement process with DA's development agreements, which I referenced previously. Next. And yes, okay, and in furtherance of how we might strategically look at different opportunities for the city to engage in a partnership in development, how we can conduct studies, some of them may come along with our specific plan. We have with the downtown specific plan, a few attendant studies that you will see show up when we bring that before you. But they may often be targeted around specific development goals that we have for an area to test the feasibility, you know, is there some economic question or market elasticity or demand, unmet demand, that we need to get a better handle on to really know how we want to structure our position with the developer when it comes to the use of public land? That there may be some opportunity costs there. If we don't do this, that we will have missed a chance to address some need if we don't do this kind of study and analysis. Then decisions that are made on the development proposal side, again, the Planning Commission being sort of the first gate for these, and most often they will also arrive before council for a final determination. And then to the extent that we have to make any kind of changes recommended around policies or text recommendations to the Title 17 or something that may be specific to the development agreement of this project, well, those will be brought to you at City Council. Next. So again, with building the roles that you play, and this really, I did present previously on amendments to the municipal code that we might have been thinking anticipation of a project that we want to see happen, a long-term strategy. We might want to address the building code in some way that lets the project forward with, you know, fewer amendments or reviews for compliance or consideration. Of course, always being reminded, and I did not mention this previously, and I should have, that the municipal code for building can never be less than what the state has applied. So we can make specific findings that are contextually driven about what Oakland is in terms of some unique condition or aspect. But in total, we have to hold to the state's building code, what is adopted or committed by them as our standard, our minimum standard in terms of enforcement. And again, with planning, City Council also plays a significant role in any amendment to the zoning ordinance, which again, may be specific to this product opportunity that's being brought forward. You make decisions, usually the ultimate ones, on the development proposals. And then again, receiving the studies or the case information or the text that we have brought forward through the Planning Commission. And then public-private development, city land. Actually, these agreements are usually conflicted more, Alexa, through your office than mine. I know the DDAs tend to be led by you, I don't know if you'd like to speak to those.
Sure, yeah, so whenever there's real estate development that happens on city-owned land, it goes through a process of sort of a negotiation and disposition process that's really designed, I think, to make sure that we're capturing and extracting all the benefits for the city that can be captured and to make sure that the deal that's being eventually constructed, the project that's being eventually constructed, really reflects the city's priorities and protects the city's interests. So that's a process that usually, that starts with approval by the city council of what's called an exclusive negotiation agreement or an ENA. We have a few of those active agreements in place right now, we'll talk about a few of them later. And that, what that really does is it sort of preserves the the rights of the developer during a negotiation period, and it's the city's commitment to the developer that we're not going to be negotiating with anybody else, with any other developer parties during that exclusive negotiation period. And so usually that can run anywhere from one to two years, is typical. And that's a period to just see if the city and the developer can arrive on agreement about the basic terms around whatever value is going to be, the land is going to be sold or leased for, what the general concept and scope of the project is going to be, and then other sort of high-level details around financing and project design. If we get through that period, everybody agrees on the basic outline of the terms for a disposition and development, then we'll come back to council with, for approval of what's called a DDA, a disposition and development agreement, or a lease disposition and development agreement, which is an LDDA. The only difference is that the LDDA is for a lease and a DDA is for a sale. Given the recent trend and direction from council over the past few years, we have been really focusing on leasing rather than selling public land. And so you're seeing more and more of the deals that are being brought forward are LDDA's or lease disposition and development agreements. So that term can last several years, you can last anywhere from two to four years, usually during which it gives the developer time to fully design and entitle the project, secure all the necessary financing, get to a construction closing where they break ground and start construction, and then get from construction through occupancy, at which point typically all the obligations have been satisfied under the DDA or the LDDA, and the city would then release the agreement, maybe with certain longer-term covenants and restrictions that might stay on the project for a longer period of term, depending on, a longer period of time, depending on if there's city financing in the deal, or if there's affordability restrictions or other things like that. Next slide, are we done with this slide, Bill?
Yes, yes, very, very much so, thank you.
It's a good segue to me, so when we talk about economic development and land use, just for purposes of this discussion, I think as a framing device, it's helpful to say that really there's three types of projects that are driving economic development and land use, and that's public-private and public-private. So when we talk about public projects, I mean, these are really city projects, so city facilities, you know, city assets that are owned by the city, managed by the city, that the city has total ownership and control over, public infrastructure projects, capital improvement projects. So these could be, you know, working on city-owned facilities like, like, you know, like, you know, City Hall or different of City Hall buildings or the plaza buildings, public infrastructure projects, or other types of major capital improvement projects. There's also private development on private land. So obviously, in the first category, the city's going to have a lot of control over these types of projects. For private development on private land, the city won't be as directly involved, but there's still a lot of sort of regulatory and approval authority that lives within Director Gilchrist's shop around, you know, dictating, you know, whether the, whatever development is happening on this privately-owned land is consistent with the city's zoning and other land use of rules and requirements. And then finally, there's public-private development, and this is what Economic and Workforce Development really focuses on with, through our public-private development or PPD team. And this is when the city has an asset or a parcel of vacant land or a building that we want to develop or redevelop, but we recognize that we need to partner with an outside party or a developer that's going to bring resources, funding, expertise to bear in order to execute the project to fruition. In that case, we form this type of agreement between the city, the public agency, and the private partner, or typically a developer in this case. And we would execute a series of agreements following the sequence I just talked about to bring that project to fruition. Next slide.
So again, I think we've talked about this several times now, but the baseline of compliance, again, is the general plan. I don't need to re-read that totally, but anything that we bring forward, one of the first tests we're going to make to the project's efficacy is, is it in conformity with the general plan? Next. And again, these are principles that we targeted before, coming out of the general plan in terms of overall objectives around the high-quality, high-density mixed use along our commercial corridors and taking full advantage of those. This is really looking more at place-based opportunities for projects we might pursue. The enhancement of residential neighborhoods, the waterfront, again, is an asset, looking at a preservation on industrial land, job-based development, and also, again, creating a vibrant downtown for all of Oakland. Next. And again, you've seen this, special area plans. And the projects that we'll be talking about are born out of these locations. At some point, we also, again, want to make sure we're tying in with other agencies, Transit in particular, where we look at the benefits of having part at the Lake Merritt Area Plan and along International Boulevard, AC Transit's investment of that Bus Rapid Transit line there, that while it's not as fixed as a subway, it is still fixed in a transportation, reliable transportation investment that then has a whole lot of opportunity for value capture for the community along its route. So again, this really gives us some sort of targeted areas where we can look at project opportunities with specific developers. They know that these areas have been designated, so they can almost pre-select themselves into pursuing certain projects within these areas because they know what the city's intention is. The other thing I just wanted to mention too, as a bit of an aside, is that when we adopt these plans, one of the advantages, in addition to being able to vision the community that we want forward, when we apply for grants, it has at least been my experience that the more you can represent that you have a plan in place and that what you're applying for in the grant is in furtherance of that plan, the much higher chance you have of receiving the award. So it's just something again to bear in mind. Next. And again, pretty much what I just stated here, that we have a, through these specific plans, clear vision that developers can again, see themselves in or out, you know, okay, there's a place for what I do, given what this plan is advancing. Again, with the plans, when they're updated, because we normally have brought them through a review themselves on EIR, then we're able to move projects through as long as they are aligned with the plan with much more lackry, much more quickly, without having to go through extensive studies and reviews. And then, as I'm sure all of you have heard, if you've gotten before at least two developers, is what they are looking for first and foremost is certainty. They just want to have some sense before they go for their investment that there's not going to be some wrinkle down the process that's related to some land use issue or something that they didn't quite get because we were as clear as we were, should have been or could have been, around the intention of the area to develop. Next. And again, I guess I apologize a little bit for the repetition, I'm sure you all get the zoning, that that is our final instrument to make sure that there is compliance. And in, as is noted here, it may be more restrictive than the general plan, but it cannot be less restrictive. So we have to make sure there's an alignment there, but then we have it as a baseline from which we can start to do some of the negotiations that Alexa has referred to in terms of the final outcome of the project. Next. And again, this is another example, similar to what I showed on the S2 area plan in the previous presentation, that along the corridor we have for International Boulevard, again, especially when you get into a planned area that is so long, that goes through so many different parts of the city, there may be the common asset that ties them together, in this case, International Boulevard as a principal neighborhood corridor, and one in which there's been the transportation investment of AC Transit's Bus Rapid Transit system. But we also have to recognize that these are going through neighborhoods that have their own character, their own investments, their own sense of what they'd like to be, and also their own competitive advantage. What is it about one of the areas that provides some opportunity for a certain type of development there as opposed to another? So again, having some clear sense of how this gets nuanced along the whole length of the plan and making sure we're clear about what we'd like to see happen there can be a good enticement for development deals, for a developer to come and say, yes, this is what I do. This looks like a place where you're interested in it, so let's sit down and talk. Next. So again, you have some good imagery of much of what has happened along the corridors there that we have for different parts of the city for transit-oriented development. Next.
And so this is my slide, I think this is, we wanted here to just show you an example of how economic development can be sort of spurred and driven within these defined plan areas, sort of a reflection of the intentionality shown by the city in really focusing sort of its efforts and its, it sort of vision around certain areas. So the International Boulevard corridor, it's a really significant economic corridor for the city, and the city has sort of, has focused a number of resources and investments along that corridor over the past several years. So just some examples of some projects that are happening currently. The photo on the left is the final phase of the Fruitvale Transit Village Affordable Housing Project. This is 100% affordable transit-oriented development project that was actually facilitated. It's at the Fruitvale BART station through a partnership with BART for use of some BART land. The Economic and Workforce Development, Public-Private Development Team has negotiated over many years to sort of bring this really 100% affordable, really large-scale, the final phase is 181 units of 100% affordable housing with ground floor retail and other community-serving amenities to the Fruitvale District. I'm really pleased to announce that the final stage of Fruitvale Transit Village is going to be complete later this year. So that's a really exciting example of sort of leveraging public land to bring a really vibrant mix of uses, including many, many units of affordable housing to a neighborhood in one of these plan areas. Also, the Bus Rapid Transit, the BRT program, which everybody's very familiar with, that went in along the International Corridor, is really improving sort of infrastructure and transportation and access out to neighborhoods, connectivity between downtown Oakland and the neighborhoods, but we know, we heard sort of early in the implementation phase from a lot of businesses impacted along the International Corridor, that they were being negatively impacted by the construction of the BRT line. And so the city did create what's called the BRTBAF, which is a lot of acronyms, but it stands for the Bus Rapid Transit Business Assistance Fund, and that was to issue grants to eligible businesses impacted by the BRT development on the International Corridor. And I'm also pleased to announce that EWD staff, business development staff, were able to close out that program this past year. They actually issued the final grants in 2022. Some of the sort of longer-term construction grants are still in the implementation, but they were able to get, I think, about $2 million in support out to businesses impacted along that corridor to help them sort of overcome, mitigate construction impacts. And then finally, another really exciting project over on the right then there is the 30-50 International Project, and that is also 100% affordable housing project, and also along that International Boulevard Plan Area Corridor that's going to be bringing units of affordable housing to the international neighborhood. And that's what, one of the great things about that project is it also includes a health clinic on the ground floor that's going to be bringing community health services to the neighborhood. So it's just, again, just some examples of how economic development works together with these sort of specified plan areas to bring resources and city resources to address, to spur the type of community-oriented development we want to see. Next slide.
All right, so in terms of opportunities leaning in, and this is a project that the council will be seeing come before this year, is the completion of the specific plan for downtown Oakland. And this is again, a sort of conjunction both of districts and of the different characters of downtown city, both what's employment-based, what's cultural, what's small retail, what's residential, heavy transportation core. You know, this is, this is where BART convenes, not San Francisco, but it's really in the heart of Oakland. And again, a downtown that if you walk around its edge, you are engaging communities and neighborhoods that also have their own character, that they understand that the threshold works both ways. So, you know, downtown is never meant to be developed as some sort of isolated thing from the communities around it, but it is really part of a transition and its character is informed by some of the connections that bring downtown to neighborhoods and neighborhoods to downtown, the characteristics of streets and boulevards, as well as the ownership and investment that members of the community may have in, because of their proximity to the downtown location. Much of the discussions we're having around different neighborhood connecting streets and conduits, 14th Street, now we just talked about International, which also queues in to downtown, that there is a, a role both the downtown plan has for leveraging what it has within the definitions of the study, but also to make sure that we're mindful and connected to the areas around. Next. So again, we'll be having an opportunity to come before the council, Planning Vision and Council with the downtown specific plan recommendations. We're also looking at the zoning that is aligned with the planning recommendations and looking at some understanding both of the demand and the supply aspects around housing, around cultural venues, around the range of uses, the scale of uses, again, small retail, larger employment-based developments, thinking about the natural connections, again, bordering the lake, and also sharing the waterfront being one of the larger and more visible connections to the waterfront face of the city. And then realizing again, that the downtown belongs to the communities that constituted, that make it, and also that it is a neighbor to the neighborhoods and neighborhoods surrounded. And one of the cities I used to work in, in Birmingham, we had a great expression that every square inch of the city is a neighborhood, you know, every square inch. So we have to always bear that in mind as we think forward with this, with plans and development. Next.
Okay, so you've seen this slide before. In case you can't tell, we're a little bit proud of this project and excited about it. Which is an example of a public-private development deal that's happening in the downtown plan area. I mentioned before Samuel Merritt University Campus. It's really closing out the final stage of the city center development plan. Hard to believe, but I think that that plan is almost 50 years in the making. It started, I think, in the 1970s, and this is the final plan, the final stage of that plan. And as I mentioned before, this is an interesting example, I think, of a public-private partnership because, you know, it is, it's a deal that was in the works for several years. It was actually originally slated to be a hotel development. It converted to a university use when a hotel development was deemed financially unfeasible on the site. And even though it is an affordable housing, it does, I think, serve a very critical economic development purpose and is a very appropriate use for this site, sort of given the height allowance and the ability to build a larger-scale building that's sort of consistent with the downtown, sort of downtown city center plan, and to really bring this, as I mentioned before, just really critical activation to the site. 1,300 students, 300 new staff and teachers, and then public amenities, like a center for community engagement and a publicly accessible plaza that will have a fitness area. Next slide.
Oh, all right. Well, yeah, and this is one I think we share, actually, just in terms of the work that's been done, the Transformative Climate Communities, TCC grant in East Oakland. Part of the conversation, and we end up focusing so much on bricks and mortar in a lot of these discussions around building, but there are many other aspects of community that are defined through policy that we adopt and implement. And I was very well-embraced when I arrived with the community around this project, that there was an interest they had in partnering with the city, and this really was a community-led initiative for the Transformative Climate Communities application and grant in partnership. And with this project, you can see the grant and its focus in the East Oakland neighborhoods and the strategies for an air quality and resilience. What it, what it did, in addition to helping us learn from community as well, us at City Hall and in our respective departments, and to establish your partnerships around these objectives, was to set a framework around the kinds of development that we would want to see moving forward, meaning the community and the city, the city government as partners. So again, the focus, you can see the priorities there on equity and health, meaning infrastructure, which really forms sort of a base triad right there. And then the urban greening, active transit, sustainable economic workforce development, renewable energy mitigation, and resilient strategies. And taking full advantage of the location, what is specific and special about this part of Oakland, and what are some of the assets? Now, we mentioned before, International Boulevard and the Transit Corridor, that as it moves through this part of the city, it also has a specific character and leverage. And it was really, we had a series of meetings and the state would come down also to meet with us collectively. And again, always led by community and some of the innovations and thinking that they've worked forward around even understanding the assets, what is valuable in the community, what do we want to celebrate and conserve, and then how do we leverage this in order to bring new opportunities to the residents? It was really a remarkable exercise.
Next slide. So yeah, just drilling a little deeper, building on what Bill said. I think this is the Transformative Climate Communities grant in East Oakland is really, it's just, it's an amazing example of sort of the power of community and how effective, how much more effective the city can be when we really lead with community voice and listen to the community. It's a completely community-driven effort. It brought in $28.2 million for this East Oakland neighborhood, which is an incredible amount of funding, and it's really to cover five projects that are all community-conceived, community-led, and that are already sort of underway. We actually just had our, I think, our one-year check-in on the status of the projects. So it's five projects in a five-square-mile area. Those projects include tree planting, they're planting a number of fruit trees and sidewalk trees throughout the neighborhood, water to improve air quality, and sort of just generally green and improve the built environment and the climate of the neighborhood. There's a scraper bike clinic, which offers training programs for local youth and helps them fix bikes, learn how to fix bikes and get their bikes operational, and aquaponics farm and a food hub that's going to be growing fresh local food for the community and also creating jobs and having apprenticeship and training programs. And then another development project that was developed through the public-private development team on city land, it was actually a pretty complex deal that required assembling parcels from a number of private owners over assembly and parcels from a number of private owners over a series of years. I think the ninety fifth and International project, now known as Axe Cherry Hill Apartments, is actually an assemblage of five or six individual parcels that the public private development team put together over a number of years in partnership with Axe Gospel Church, which is a local community leader in the in the neighborhood to assemble this parcel that they've now built in partnership with a developer. Fifty-five deeply affordable units and a health clinic onsite to a local health clinic. So that project is almost complete. I think it's going to be complete this spring. They're just facing a couple of utility delays from PG&E, which unfortunately is not uncommon for projects like this. And I'm sure the weather isn't helping recently, but that project, they've already accepted applications for this a hundred percent affordable project with deep affordability. And they've been accepting applications from the surrounding neighborhood and community already. And that should open, I think, pretty, pretty soon in twenty twenty-three. So it should start leasing up and occupying shortly. And that's all made possible by a combination of sort of city, city work and the transformative climate communities grant funding. Next slide. So I think it's going over to me for a little while. I talked a little bit about, you know, all the projects you just saw here were sort of developed, worked on by the public private development team. And they were developed either on city owned land or former redevelopment owned land. And how that works, sort of the resources that are brought to bear to make that possible is sort of the legacy of the State of California Redevelopment Agency. So I think, you know, as I mentioned in my EWD presentation, State of California formerly had a resource called the Redevelopment Agencies that were local agencies that came with significant funding and significant ability to leverage redevelopment bond funding to bring about sort of community development work. That unfortunately was dissolved in twenty twelve. And as part of the dissolution of redevelopment, it led to the creation of the Redevelopment Successor Agencies. Oakland had ORSA, the Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency. Under the obligations of dissolution, the Oakland Redevelopment Successor Agency has an obligation to essentially unwind all of the the sort of the legacy of redevelopment. And that means over time to divest itself of all of the assets, which is usually land that had been acquired for development during the redevelopment period. All of that land is called out on the Long Range Property Management Plan. So these are certain sites that were retained by the city for government use. And it's a pretty broad range of sites. It's publicly available and includes the Oakland Army Base and the Coliseum area. So when we talk about, you know, how we're developing these sites, if the site is called out on the Long Range Property Management Plan, that means it's subject to certain restrictions and rules about how it can be disposed of and developed. And then in addition, you know, a lot of the the acquisition of these sites was funded through redevelopment bonds. And to the extent that those redevelopment bond agreements are still in existence, they're still active. They are governed by what's called the Bond Spending Plan. And so this authorizes the appropriation and allocation of our former redevelopment bond funds and any revenue generated from those funds. So essentially, there's, there's this whole universe of restrictions that come with redevelopment properties and the associated bond funds. So when we talk about how the public private development team is disposing of these assets for development, they are doing it in the context of the unwinding of redevelopment. And what that means is that they, you know, in addition to have to follow the State Surplus Land Act requirements that Councilmember Ramachandran was asking about for disposition, any proceeds or assets from the sale or the lease of these lands are going to be subject to the act, the applicable redevelopment bond agreements, which could mean in some cases of the city, the amount that the city can receive from the amount of proceeds the city can receive from those transactions might have to be shared in certain cases with with other taxing entities. It also means that how those, how those bond proceeds and funds can be spent or used by the city has to meet certain redevelopment requirements and restrictions under redevelopment law, which basically means for, to to address blight in certain redevelopment areas or for the development of affordable housing throughout the city. Next slide. And so just at a high level, again, in keeping with sort of the trend of of the city's direction on how we're using and disposing of public land, there really has been a shift on affordable housing, a shift sort of to affordable housing. I think really emphasizing just the urgency of the homelessness crisis in Oakland and the need to leverage all the public resources available to ensure that we're meeting that need as best we can. So this slide says there's over five hundred units, affordable units on city land that are in the pipeline. This specifically refers only to those projects that are being developed by EWD on, you know, through the PPD team. There's actually, when we look more broadly at all the units of affordable housing that are happening throughout the city on public land, adding in things that our housing and community development colleagues work there doing on Brooklyn Basin and other projects, it's actually more than a thousand units. It's closer to eleven hundred units. So just emphasizing that there is a lot of affordable housing being constructed on city land in the pipeline now, either in predevelopment or construction. So just some highlights, again, this is just focusing on the work that EWD is doing, the PPD team. There's two hundred and thirty-six affordable units under construction at the Fruitvale two beach Fruitvale Transit Village project I mentioned and Ninety-Fifth and International Boulevard. Another seventy-six affordable units under an active LDDA on thirty fifty international. And then there's another two hundred plus affordable and workforce housing units in that ENA phase we talked about. And that includes the Twelfth Street remainder parcel next to Lake Merritt in District Two. And then another really exciting project in District Six that I'm sure Councilmember Jenkins is well acquainted with, which is the Seventy-third and Foothill, a coma market hall, Black Cultural Zone Hub, which is featured over here to the left or to the right in a rendering, which is a really, sort of a really exciting, I think, mix of uses again, that brings a mix of affordable housing, residential uses with sort of Market Hall activation and business incubation space, and that's led by the Black Cultural Zone. Next slide. And then while affordable housing absolutely is the priority for the city and for the state as stipulated by the State Surplus Land Act, there are other, I think it's important to understand that there are other public private development projects happening on public land that advance the city's other priorities in that first priority sheet that we led with at the, at the top of the presentation. And that's really advancing sort of cultural security and this idea of how do we espouse these other values that are really critical to the city. So two great examples of that is the Henry J Kaiser Convention Center, which has been that beautiful historic building at the bottom of Lake Merritt that had been shuttered for a number of years, but that is currently under construction with, under a lease agreement with the city and some grant funding and city funding. And the plan is to reopen that later this year. They're completely renovating the historic Calvin Simmons Theater. And through, you know, a partnership, a community benefit agreement like I talked about, that Councilmember Bass was really, is very familiar with, really emphasizes sort of the importance of making this beautiful renovated historic arts performance space available to local arts organizations. So that's an exciting use. And then also there's a proposal currently in the ENA stage for a new museum of jazz arts at the historic Fire Alarm Building just across on the other side of Lake Merritt. And that ENA has been underway for a while and will actually be coming to council for an extension very soon in the new year in twenty twenty-three. Next slide. And then just touching quickly on some other major developments, the Oakland Army Base. It's a very large parcel, one of the largest parcels that the city owns, in addition to the Coliseum, over a hundred and thirty acres. It was deeded to the city from the army through an economic development conveyance. There has been a long history of redevelopment at this site leading up to sort of the present day where they're currently active, sort of agreements, DDAs with, with CWS for a new recycling facility at the site, CAS. Again, to relocate for, to enter a DDA to relocate their recycling facility. And then OMSS for construction of truck services on the site. So this is a large and complex industrial site that the city has been in a very, very lengthy process to sort of redevelop in a way that locates some needed, you know, public facilities at a benefit to the city. Next site. Next slide. Sorry. And then finally, the Coliseum Complex, which I think everybody's familiar with. That's our other big site that the city owns. So the city owns an undivided fifty percent interest with the county. The county sold their portion to the Oakland A's. And then City Council in twenty twenty-one authorized an exclusive negotiation agreement and ENA with the African American Sports and Entertainment Group for the city's interest. So city staff have been negotiating with AASG for a year and a half now. We have an ENA drafted. Very, very close to execution. It's been with AASG for review. Last I heard, it was actually just about to be brought forward and signed. So really excited. That's a really just a catalyst project for East Oakland, tremendous opportunity there to redevelop that site in partnership with AASG and really bring some much needed housing and economic activation and development to that community. Next slide. And then just touching again on surplus land, we talked about this already. But just, you know, there is an interactive map that staff have created that shows you all the city owned sites, all eleven hundred city owned sites. It includes public right of way, it includes parks. There's layers. For those of you who like to play around with GIS, you can click all around in it and look at all the different sites in the different districts. So there's a link here and it's in the attachment. There were sixteen sites that were declared surplus in twenty twenty, two more were declared by council, I think in twenty twenty-two, actually, sorry, that's a typo. So Police Administration Building and the Clay Street Garage. So as I mentioned, you know, eighteen sites essentially in total that have been declared surplus under state law and directed by council for staff to develop. Staff are putting those sites out for development. There, there's a pacing and a sequencing that has to happen as these sites are released, and that's really restricted both by staff capacity. It really takes a significant amount of staff effort to put out one of these sites to comply with state law, to go through the full negotiation process with a developer. The typical life cycle of a development from release for availability to occupancy can be five to seven years or longer. And that has to allow time for, and as I said, entitlements, design, financing, negotiation. It's a lengthy process. So of those sixteen plus two, eighteen sites that council has directed staff declared a surplus and directed staff to release for development, five have had their notices of availability issued. One of those has led to a successful ENA. That's the Seventy-third and Foothill site. What's going to be the Black Cultural Zone Hub that I mentioned before. Two of them, we didn't receive any viable proposals on yet. That's Clarin Eads and D seven and Thirty-six and Foothill in D five. Those were included in recent rounds of home key funding applications, trying to see if we could pair those vacant sites with state funding to make, you know, to kind of solicit some more viable proposals. So we're going to keep working through that process. I know that process is underway to see if we can get a proposal going on those sites. And then the other two sites, Barcelona Parcel and Oak Knoll and nineteen eleven Telegraph. We have completed successful negotiations with developers and those ENA recommendations should be brought to council this spring. That's the goal, sort of once we get sort of alignment on all sides about the final deal terms. So just emphasizing that it's a lengthy process. It's a very important process to get these, to get these projects right and to ensure that they have the level of community support and are complying fully with state law and the Oakland Municipal Code and meeting the needs of the community. And as I mentioned, there will be another strategic informational memo being brought forward later this spring that will share more details about the sequence of release and that will also solicit some input from council to hopefully have some, some discussion on the topic. Next slide. This is where we walk through everything that our departments are bringing to council around land use and projects this spring. I don't know if you want to go through it, Bill.
Yeah, and I think we've touched on much of it. You're going to be seeing the housing element before the end of this year. CED will see it on the twenty-fourth. And at the end of this month, rather, CED, we'll see it on the twenty-fourth. And then you will buy thirty-first, which is again, there at the statutory time, state has for its adoption. The downtown specific land, we've talked plenty about Brooklyn Basin. Again, yesterday was our planning commission and it's on its way to you all. Again, the DA that I think has worked very well towards the affordable housing consideration. Alexa, you may want to take the others.
Yeah, so I mentioned the ENA extension for the Museum of Jazz Arts. But the Fire Alarm Building should be coming, I think, in the next, in next month. And then two projects, two hundred percent affordable housing projects happening at the Twelfth Street remainder site near Lake Merritt, what we call parcel one and two. An LDDA with a bald C for their project is coming next week, I believe, on the seventeenth. And then there's negotiations ongoing with SAHA for parcel two with the expectation that an ENA recommendation will be brought later in the spring. I talked about nineteen eleven Telegraph, that's one of that first batch of five NOAs that were issued pursuant to council direction. That's a recommendation will be for a mixed use, mixed income housing project coming to council. Also this spring, similar to the Barcelona Parcel at Oak Knoll, it will be a workforce affordable housing project coming to council for an ENA recommendation later this spring. Next slide. Oh, that's it. So yeah, you can see lots of, lots of activity happening here, lots of, lots of development activity, lots of projects coming forward. So I'm sure we'll have lots to talk about in the next few months with staff.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the presentation. And again, these materials are in the meeting packet on Legistar. Colleagues, please raise your hand if you have any questions, comments, clarifications.